Right, good afternoon everybody and welcome to this first new schools forum. If I introduce myself first, I'm Neil Butler, I'm the Schools Funding Manager and also I'm clerk to the Schools Forum. Hopefully everybody can hear me. Put your hand up if you can.
Yeah.
Good, good. Just some protocols and that's if you're not speaking, if you can put your microphones on to mute. And if you would like to speak, hopefully you have the facility to raise your hand within Microsoft Teams. If you could do that, please, that would be really helpful to this meeting. If I first start, I do actually have some apologies. I have apologies from Jane Burrows from Maitland School and Amy Woodward from North Leamington School. I'm also aware that Alison Davies needs to be away by 3:30. Clive Sentence can only join us for half an hour and Michael Moran till four o'clock. And also Ian Budd, one of the officers, the Assistant Director for Education Services, needs to be away by four as well. I don't intend to do introductions at this stage, I think it would be lengthy, but I think people can see who has actually attended the meeting. But hopefully if you do speak, if you could just introduce yourselves at that moment in time, that would be helpful. So the first agenda item is the election of Chair. Now, the Chair has to be a Schools Forum member, it can't be an officer. I'd like to know, is anybody prepared to stand for Chair? Okay. Is anybody prepared to stand for Chair for this meeting only? Right, for those couple of people, hello, for those couple of people that have joined us, I'll just mention the protocols are, is keep your microphone to mute if possible. And then unmute it when you want to speak. And if you do want to speak, is to raise your hand. At the moment, I'm trying to look for a volunteer to chair this meeting. The Chair has to be a Member of Schools Forum.
Neil, I'll chair the meeting, this meeting.
Is that Larry?
It's Phil Johnson.
Oh, hi Phil, yes, I've got you. Thank you ever so much, Phil, that really is appreciated. So you don't have to take any notes or any minutes or anything, that would be all sorted, but it's just a case, if you can go through the individual agenda items, introducing them and saying who will be presenting them, that'd be really useful. And thank you very much, Phil. I won't look for a Vice Chair at this stage, if that's okay, but we're trying to...
I will introduce myself, I'm Phil Johnson, I'm the Governor at Whitestone Infant School in Dunedin. I have been on the Forum for a number of years. I'm also Chair of Publicness at an Academy, Stockingford Academy in Dunedin too. Okay, so the next item then is Item Three, which is minutes of the last meeting.
Yes, so hopefully everybody's had a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Does anybody have any corrections to make? I'm aware that Martin Davies has made one amendment to that, which was minor, but that's fine. But does anybody else that was at that meeting have anything that they wanted to report and needs changing?
Okay, shall we go on to Matters arising then, which I think is Item Four?
Yep, if we can go on to Matters arising. So this is, this is a standing item at Schools Forum and it's basically picking up any issues that have been outstanding from a previous Schools Forum meeting. So it's just a case of going through to pick up any outstanding issues. So one issue that has been discussed was sparsity funding. And Schools Forum supported the allocation of sparsity funding for this financial year. And that money has been agreed by the local authority that it will be paid to our 14 smallest rural schools for this year. And the payments should have been in schools in September. Right, the admissions is still an outstanding issue and we've actually asked the responsible officer to bring it back to the December meeting. This is around how academies were charged for admissions and whether there's the possibility of a rebate to the academies that are bought into that service. Because it transpired that they were paying a slightly higher rate than our maintained schools. But that issue is being looked into and it is still outstanding. The next item is on early years ring fence carry forward. At the end of last year, there was about 1.8 million pounds worth of unspent early years money from the DSG to devolved Schools Grant. This money has been ring fenced and there were questions about, raised about how we were actually going to allocate that money and whether it could actually be done as supporting early years providers during the Covid-19 pandemic. There are significant uncertainties around Schools' early years funding at the moment. And the early years working group are of the mind to actually look at this in the spring term when things have hopefully settled down a bit. At the moment, and it is within the briefing, is that the ESFA have already said that they will actually guarantee funding in the October 20 census, based on October 2019 census. So the early years providers shouldn't see any significant fall in their funding for this financial year. But I'm happy to take any questions from Schools Members.
Okay, any questions, anyone? Indicate if you want to. Okay, Neil.
Thank you, Phil. Right, so happy to move on.
Yeah.
Item Five, you would have a copy of the Schools Forum Terms of Reference, which was sent out, a six-page document. This covering report looks at some of the changes that we're making to these. The most significant is, is normally Schools Forum would run for two years. And we try to do it within two financial years, so we'd actually start from April, running round to the, for two years to the following March. With the issue whereby the elections were delayed and the elections only took place in June and August. The proposal is that Schools Forum will actually sit for two and a half months, for 30 months. And the Chair, once we get a Chair, would sit for 18 months. So that Chair's position, because that only runs for one year normally, would be to March 22. So this is, needs to be agreed by all Schools Forum Members. But again, I'm happy to take any questions from anybody.
Okay, anybody like to comment on that? Is that agreed?
Hello, it's Martin Davis, I've just come in.
Oh. Hello, Martin.
Because the link was deleted, the link went to my delete box, don't ask me why. And I had to recover it. But I'm with you now.
Well, Martin, we're talking about Terms of Reference for Schools Forum.
Yes. Oh, right, yes.
And the proposal is, because we've lost half a school year in terms of electing us, we're going to have an extended term for this one. And then who knows what happens? Anybody, are there any objections to that? Okay, in the absence of that, we'll go ahead and approve that. Thank you.
So we go on to Item Six, Scheme for Financing of Schools. This only relates to maintained schools, it does not relate to academies. And each year, we have to go through a consultation process of the Scheme for Financing Schools to see if there are any comments from Schools. So you would have attached as an appendix, the revised scheme. And there really is only a few minor amendments to the scheme for this year. The first one is that it's, that ESFA were proposing that we have to issue Schools with three-year budget plans. As a local authority, we are one of the few local authorities that has been doing this for a number of years. So we actually already meet that requirement. Also, the planning for deficits whereby we need to have Schools have a, have to submit a recovery plan if their deficit goes above 5% of their Schools block allocation. Again, that is something that we have been doing for another number of years. And the final change is around insurances whereby Schools can now look to the Secretary of State's Risk Protection Arrangements. Again, that has been covered within the Section 48 Scheme for Financing of Schools. This will go out to a consultation with Schools. And that period of consultation will run for a number of weeks. So the issue is, is for maintained Schools only to agree that timetable.
Okay, we're happy with those two recommendations then. So agreed the scheme and the timetable is included in this report.
Right.
Any objections to that?
Nikki's got her hand up.
Hi, yeah. Hi, it's just Nikki Beaton here, Head Teacher of Aberdeen and Beddington National School. Just on the, on page 32, Neil, the maintained schools have got their old names, they've got the Children's Centre as well, so they're just all maintained schools now, okay, just as an amendment.
Thank you, I will change that before it is circulated to the maintained Schools, thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Pointing that out.
All right, so with that correction, we're happy to go ahead with those recommendations. Any dissent? Okay, thank you then. Right, Item Seven then is the DSG Report and this is Panema, I think.
Hi, it's Brian Smith here, I'm deputising for Panema today.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Hi. I'm sorry, I'm the local authority officer for Portfaro Finance Lead for children's families and education.
Okay.
I, I'll look at the screen, my screen, which has got the report on, so if I look away, I'm not ignoring yours. I'll just quickly run through the report and we can, I'll take any questions as we go along. I'm predicting that most of the questions will be around the high needs block area. And as you know, we've got another agenda item later on, so it might be more appropriate to answer that, answer any questions within that area, within that report as well. So this is the Forecast Report, predicting, managers predicting their forecasting and expenditure for the full year by the 31st of March 2021. It's part of a suite of reports, which you do both for the Schools Forum as well as for Corporate Board and for the various DLTs of the local authority. So if I take you into, just run you through it, Table One is really just summarizing and a reminder of the allocation of the DSG funding envelope for 2021. That includes the amount of funding for academy schools as well. Going on to Table Two, on page two, that's just a refresh of where we were originally at the 442 million funding envelope. Then taking account of the allocations to academy schools and also revise high needs recruitment. So the bottom line is that we're reporting at 234 million and that's what we'll be reporting against. Table, Table Three, Paragraph 2.1 really is the main gist of the report. So this shows the budgeted allocations, repeating the figures in the top, coming to the 234 million and the forecast at the beginning of September. So from that, you can see that three of the, three of the blocks are underspending. But they, that's completely offset by the high needs block overspend of 11.7 million, giving an overall DSG forecasted overspend of 8.5 million. What that does mean is that we're actually way over the 1% threshold that the DFE allow us. So we're having to do a separate exercise. We've spaced a DSG recovery plan, of which the high needs block recovery plan is the main element. We've just had a refreshed guidance on that from the DFE last week, which we're looking to do and then bring back to the Schools Forum at some stage for consultation. Okay.
Apologies, I've just joined the meeting, sorry.
Okay, you're very welcome, whatever that was.
It's Tony Dix from Paddocks Primary.
Okay, all right, we're on, we're on Item Seven, which is the DSG Monitoring Report.
Yeah, we're basically just...
Go ahead, Brian.
That's fine, thank you, we're basically just starting on to paragraph, sorry, section, paragraphs three points, three point onwards, which is the bottom of page three. So the main headlines from each block, we've got the Schools block of 2.367 million underspend. The vast majority of that is to do with the contingency, which is for places. And then we've got some minor overspends on a couple of services, to school performance and ethnic minority and travel achievement.
So are you referring to documents? Where are they? Because all I've been sent is an agenda, because I'm used to this.
I think the documents should be attached to the same email.
Okay.
Yeah, carry on, Brian.
All right, that's fine. Yeah, so the next big line, well, really, the main area to highlight is the high needs block overspend, which is currently forecasted 11.678 million. That's partly to do with the 5.24 million that was carried forward from last financial year. And then the remainder, 6.4 million is this year's predicted in-year overspend. The top of page four in Paragraph 3.3 is really just showing what, where that 6.4 million in-year overspend is coming from. Mostly, again, the vast majority is the 6.348 million in the first bullet point in Paragraph 3.3. Obviously, monitoring of this is an ongoing process, as is revising the savings plans and the interventions that we'll mention later on in Dwayne's report on the High Needs Block Recovery Plan. So it's just highlighting that. And then there's a few, a few minor, relatively minor over and underspends in a couple of other areas. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Brian, in terms of high needs block, I mean, obviously, it's an ongoing issue, but I'm right in thinking that in terms of it creating a deficit, which we've got to decide to sort out, that's common to every authority in the country, it's not just a worship problem.
Yes, it is, it's more, it's coming, you know, there are a few authorities where it isn't an issue because of historic funding arrangements, but for the vast majority of, it's a national, the SCND area and the funding of it is a national thing. We are starting to, Ian or Andy Fenton might be able to put some more input into this, but we are looking to do some more national lobbying with, to the government about this.
Okay, thank you, Ian. We can't hear you, Ian, I'm afraid.
Sorry, those of you who are close to local politics, who have picked up at the Full County Council last week.
You've gone again, Ian.
Okay, hopefully it will hold. Hopefully nobody's muting me. Those who are close to Warcher County Council Politics would have picked up that there was a motion at full council last week, which was passed with all party support. And it's very much recognizing some attentions that we're all working with in terms of the quality of provision, the challenges from increasing need for provision and the challenges there are around adequacy of funding on SEND. And following that motion that was passed last week, we've got a task and finish group of councillors who are working with us on the SEND Change Programme, which Dwayne will talk to in more detail on a later agenda item. But there's also recognition that additional funding has been announced this year by central government, but that can only partly address the pressures that are apparent in the system. And given that we are ethical practitioners, we can't be driven by the funding. We have to continue to meet the statutory requirements in terms of support for children with special educational needs and disabilities. So when it comes to the Change Programme, we'll be talking all about how we can learn from the best and most effective practice nationally. And if you do look at some of the most effective authorities, they aren't those that spend the most. So if I'm trying to summarize what we're doing on SEND really, really simply, it's to apply best and most effective practice for our learners, our children and young people and families. Lots of that will be around changing the conversation with Schools, so Schools are clear around when they are able to support children in their local communities and how, and they are trained and equipped to do so. And yet, we also still expect there to be a gap in funding and that's where we need to make evidence-based representations to central government. And whether it's from a councillor's perspective or I know from head teachers and governors' perspective, I know we'll be together for those representations on adequate funding too.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any more questions or comments for Brian on this report, please? Yes, Andrew Felton. Okay. Martin Davies.
Sorry, I just wanted to add to Ian's comments, the one-year funding, Andy Felton, Assistant Director for Finance for Warcher County Council. The funding that we've got next year at the moment, we've only got certainty over for one year, so we don't know whether there's an ongoing commitment to that yet. And obviously, there's a lot of uncertainty with the national financing generally of the public sector in terms of the coronavirus response. So we're waiting to see and trying to get some ascertain whether that is ongoing or not, or whether it'll be extended or not through sort of softer routes at this point in time.
Okay, thank you for that. Martin Davies, please. You're on mute, Martin, still. You're on mute still.
Is that...
Yeah.
Right, fine. Just a general question, really, we know we've had a whole history of the high needs block overspend. Are we, in broad terms relating to our overall budget, sort of particularly high, middling or low? I mean, where roughly are we? Silence.
Sorry, sorry, I was...
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, it's only a general question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, we've moved our mics. Thank you. Okay, so basically, having worked for other authorities and sort of in the network around the high needs block, I think water are relatively low. And the reason for that at the moment is because in the past five years, the council has paid off the overspend, where other councils have not necessarily done that. They've contributed perhaps an amount of money. Nevertheless, because the funding regs have changed now, that's no longer possible. So the only way we can actually transfer any money is either through the 0.5, through the Schools Forum and working with us, or through the Secretary of State and by lobbying. So we are in a good position, but I think we're in a good position purely because the council have paid off previous overspend.
Okay, thank you for that, John. Are there, Andrew Felton?
Yes. Sorry, slight delay late in the camera and the mic come back on. I suppose the only thing to add to Dwayne's position is that the fact that, and I'm relatively new to Warcher County Council, I only started in February. But the fact the council has bailed out that overspend over a period of time has meant that maybe we're slightly behind on the transformation. I know we've raised this in other forums previously. We're playing a bit of catch-up now in terms of moving forward.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, Mr Dex, we can. And so I think going forward, we're obviously trying to work out how we accelerate some of that lost time in terms of turning around some of the send provision and issues that we need to deal with to get it back more onto an even keel.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more comments or questions on this item? Okay, can we move on to item eight then, please? Which is the de-delegation of the Schools Block Budget. And I think it's Neil again, is it?
Yes, it's me again, Phil. Again, this is for maintain schools only, and it's just to agree the timetable for consultation under section three. And I apologise is that the second two of the three dates, I've still had them, is 2019, they should be 2020. But we, it's for schools to.
I've lost sound. Can anyone hear that?
We can hear, we can also hear you, please. Can you turn your mic off?
Yes.
Carry on, please.
Of course. So this is just to agree the timetable for the consultation with schools on de-delegation for 2122.
I can't hear anyone else.
I think the problem lies with your transmission. We can all hear you, but we're trying to carry on with the meeting. Yeah, would you like to carry on, please? Sorry.
Yeah, so what the maintain schools members of Schools Forum have asked to do is to approve the timetable, that we'll go out to schools to see what their views are on de-delegation for next year. And that would be consultation with head teachers and chairs of governors. But we only expect one response from each school. Once those responses have been received, they will be collated and they will be brought back to Schools Forum in December, so that you can see what the views of schools are, because the final decision on whether de-delegation carries on in 2122 rests with Schools Forum. So what I'm asking for is for the maintain schools, if they've got any questions on the paper, and if they're happy to agree the timetable.
Okay, we're happy with that. Any objections, please? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Okay, I think we've got, I think we've got that then, Neil.
Yep. Excellent, thank you. I'm down for item nine as well, but I know that Ian may need to leave the meeting a bit early. So he has asked that if he could go on now with his education services updates. Is that okay, Ian?
Okay, thank you.
So this is item 14 then, yeah? Okay, Ian, carry on.
Thanks, Neil, and thanks, Phil, for volunteering to be in the chair this afternoon. It's much appreciated. And anyway, that we can support you in this meeting, and anybody who's volunteering for chairing and vice-chairing going forwards, we are here to support you in taking up those leadership roles, because the work of Schools Forum is very key in terms of governance of the organisation and delivering as effectively and efficiently as we can do on our education change programmes and our pattern of provision in individual schools and academies. So welcome this afternoon. A thank you to those who are back on Schools Forum with a fresh renomination, as it were, and those that are with Schools Forum for the first time. And you're straight into a formal meeting this afternoon. And I think one of the things that we will want to make sure we have is the opportunity for you to raise any questions around how things work and how things could work directly. So you've got our contact details and perhaps some informal development time as well. So you can ask those what-if questions outside the formal meeting. And you know, when it's a fresh phase, as it were, a new school year and a new Schools Forum, it's time to reflect as well. You know, none of us could have made up the circumstances of these last seven months. So whether you are a school leader, whether you are a governor, thank you for all the adaptations that you've been making over those months. A lot of our focus has had to be around Covid response and recovery. And over the summer, a lot of work has gone in to refreshing risk assessments and action plans for education this term. And you may have heard it through other channels, but that time has been time well invested. There were too many children who, and young people who missed too much of their education in the summer. And now we are in a position where everyone is expected to be back in adjusted environments. We are seeing that a number of our children, young people are much safer and supported in terms of their wellbeing than they would have been in that time that they were out of school. So a big thank you for that. And then if we're thinking about the whole school population, I can tell you that attendance in schools is up in the 90s, over 90%. At two, three weeks in, there was a little bit of a blip in secondary, whilst attendance in primary and special continued to rise. And that's probably best described as a wave of situations in individual schools that meant that some young people needed to self-isolate. But the number of those incidents now is reducing over this last week, which is heartening and important, and links back to the risk assessment and action plans that schools have put into place. So we're back in a position where attendance is very, very positive for children, young people as learners. And attendance is increasing, is very, very positive amongst the staff in schools as well. So that is down to all the hard work and commitment that we have across the workforce, across schools and academies, and a real commendation to them and to the governors who are supporting and advising them. Very much part of what is important to us as an education community, as providers of support services and to school leaders as well, is that we also now make the most of the technology as well. Many of you will know that every Tuesday, we have a massive turnout from school leaders across the system to be considering the latest issues, the latest guidance, and working through what it can mean for individual schools as a group together. Because one of the mantras throughout these seven months has been that nobody should go through these unprecedented times in isolation. There should be access to advice, guidance, sounding things out, asking questions and getting them answered, and working things through together as a community. And making the most of teams, we'll continue to have those open access meetings every week for school leaders, the wellbeing offer for school leaders as well. And we'll keep those leadership help lines open as well. And why are the number of incidents of coronavirus reducing? We think it is down to the vigilance and those detailed plans that every school has got for its home community, and the fact within an hour, we can make sure the right people are self-isolating if an incident arises. And that's down to really rapid notification of anybody who's symptomatic or has a positive test to us in the local support services and specifically our seconded director of Public Health Team. But there's learning as well. There's been some horrible tragedies over these months and some real challenges and difficulties for people to work their way through. But there is learning too, that will make a positive difference for the future in terms of resilience. It can range from the webinars that we are doing on wellbeing and anxiety and trauma, all the way through to the dedicated casework with families who have challenges in returning to the school environment. But it can also include, and it does include in terms of our support service offer, a refreshed approach in terms of our IT support services and that series of how-to manuals that we put on the web around remote learning. It will also include what we collectively are able to add value on in terms of recovery of that gap in learning and that gap in social experiences for too many children, young people as well. So do look out for the Warwickshire Challenge, the Warwickshire offer in terms of the recovery being not only around the assessment and muting the gaps in children, young people's curriculum experience, but the enhanced offer will include access to mentors and coaches for those who would benefit from that, and also looking very closely at the social experiences and the social interactions that will add resilience to children, young people going forwards. You all have known along the way that a lot of government advice was around stability in trade and education support services. And that requires careful discernment and working the way through in terms of what governing bodies and schools want to be buying, and what we can as an authority afford to provide. We have, as a community, been able to get a low stability over recent months. But there may be times where Schools Forum need to be looking carefully at what is happening in terms of services where there is a reduction in demand despite flexibility and changes in the pattern of provision, for example, the music service, or indeed what happens in terms of the future of services that are not accessible for the foreseeable future, because Covid is going to be with us not just for the immediate term, but into the medium and longer term. So for example, overnight stays are banned, so there are limits in terms of the type of outdoor education service and experience that children, young people are allowed to have. So we need to make the most out of the Covid situation. We're continuing to adjust what our services look like and feel like, sometimes making the most of the use of technology, but sometimes making changes to how services will be delivered for the long term. And other than that, we already had a little bit of an introduction to what is our largest single area of transformation and change. There is so much that we aspire to in terms of our pattern of provision on send and inclusion. We want the best for all of our children and young people. We really want to be an inclusive education community. And we know that as an aspiration is right, but there are many areas, either in schools and academies or in education support services, we are not yet working at an optimum level. Sure, we've got many teams and many schools that are outstanding in their field and their practice, but we need to get to a position where we are consistent in doing that across the system. And when we've come to it as an item, there are 31 major projects that are designed to be making a real difference in terms of children, young people and families' experiences in the education system, focused on getting the outcomes those children and young people deserve in the most efficient and effective way that we can see, looking at practice across the country and the research base around what is right to be doing on send. But that's going to be quite a journey, and we need you to be looking at what's working on that, advising where you think we could be even stronger, advising where you think we haven't quite got it right. We need to be doing a lot of engagement with Senkos, with school leaders, with head teachers, with governors, with parents and carers, and indeed with our own internal teams, whether that's in education or social care, or with our health colleagues. It's a massive change programme, massively significant for the whole of the council. And I need you to be a big part of that over these months ahead. And that may merit a seminar or workshop for us before we come into doing more formal decisions that affect the resourcing of send going forwards. So thank you for your patience. Thank you for your volunteering. And I'm so grateful for the time that you're putting into Schools Forum work. And we've got quite a journey ahead together.
Okay, thanks, Ian. Prepared to take a few questions. Are there any questions for Ian? Comments? Martin?
I turned off the mute. Yeah, two generic questions, really. I mean, the first is, there was obviously concern about the nature of pupils' behaviour returning to schools after this very long gap. Firstly, are there any kind of broad messages that are coming through, or is it just, as far as you know, just what happens in individual schools? The second question, which I think in a sense you were implying what you're saying, it seems to me in terms of, heavy commas, catch up, we're not going to be there at least until the 2021-22 school year, certainly not fully in 2020-21.
Yeah. In terms of return to school, I know a lot of thought, care and attention in the planning was around what behaviour would be like when children, young people came back. And indeed, actually, many of those plans, most of those plans included phased bringing people back in. So there could be a lot of care and attention to inducting them to new routines in the school environment, plus also paying some attention to their pastoral needs, wellbeing needs, before they got on to assessing gaps in learning and what might best meet those gaps. Really heartening to be able to report back, head teachers consistently have been reporting that not only did they and their staff colleagues welcome children, young people back, clearly, being back at school was welcomed by the children, young people themselves and by their parents and carers. I think that's reflected then in the attendance percentages being much higher than national, and much higher than any of us were anticipating at this point. So we're talking now a relatively few families that need personalised support to encourage them back. So it's a really positive picture. And if, if any of you has a down day, and I'm going to be honest, I think everybody has had down days at some point over these seven months. I think with, to the Schools Forum members, I think it'd be really good to send links to some of the YouTube materials that some of our schools have put together. Vox Pox with children, young people, parents and staff in school communities, just so happy to be back valuing school after all that disruption, which is going to take some real time to recover. I mentioned Tuesday lunchtime meetings, we have them every week with head teachers and actually other years' leaders and college representatives too. Big focus next week is going to be on practitioners sharing what they think is effective on catch-up. And we also got some input there from the Education Endowment Foundation as well. So you know, there's going to be an evidence basis to recommendations on how best to stop that gap getting wider.
Okay, thank you. Ian, I think I'd also welcome the monthly meetings that the Government Development Team are doing, the sort of open meetings with governors, because I've found them very useful too. It's quite nice to be able to just chat to people in an informal basis and listen to what people's concerns are.
Oh, absolutely. You know, I mentioned earlier, we all have dip days. It's great to get feedback on what could be better. And sometimes those informal meetings on teams have been really good to get insight on effective practice and how we can best support the education community. But partway, the feedback from school leaders, from governors participating in the governor's services meetings, and actually from our trade union colleagues as well, was, actually, that was very practical in people not feeling isolated. And that's so important in life, isn't it? Feeling that people can get through this together. And that's so important as part of a community, community of interest.
Yeah, thank you. What's your view on external professional visits to schools, Ian? I know that's been, there's issues around risk assessments and stuff, but did you see that getting back to a bit of a more normal situation? Because obviously, with things like EdPsych and stuff, you get much more out of personal interaction than being able to do it remotely.
Yeah. On risk assessments, positions not so different for support services to schools in that all have worked their way through risk assessments. And for many members of staff colleagues, they've done individual risk assessments as well, whether it's because of an underlying health condition, or that is a colleague from a Bain background. So there's institutional service, risk assessment, and there are personalised risk assessments in place. Now, for a number of support services, they have now been stood up. And, okay, some. And okay, sometimes, depending on the service, the mode of delivery for meetings or consultations is using the Teams technology, or it can be on school visits. But you're right, it's kind of like standing up at the moment, because there are some schools who are not yet for some services in a position where they are confident to have onsite visits. So we are partway through that now. Some are welcoming onsite visits from support services and others not quite there yet. And that will continue to evolve and we'll work on it, but there isn't a bar to us providing support services.
Okay, thank you for that. Any more questions, comments to Ian? In that case, thank you very much for your time, Ian.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so then our next item is item nine now, I believe.
Yes, I mean, we're now moving into the part of the agenda which is for information and comment only, so it's not necessarily for any decision-making for Schools Forum. So the first paper is outlining the twenty-one-twenty-two National Funding Formula budget-setting timetable. Over the summer, I mean, the DFE actually gave us a lot of information around funding next year for schools, high needs and central services. One of the things we're still waiting for is early years funding. But this paper specifically looks at the National Funding Formula in Warwickshire schools. I think we need to be clear that right at the beginning of the proposal for the National Funding Formula is that both Schools Forum and councillors agree that we wanted to move to the hard National Funding Formula as quickly as possible, but that was very reliant on affordability. This financial year is probably the year that we've actually almost achieved the hard formula for the first time. The last piece of that jigsaw was managing to get sparsity funding into our fourteen most smallest rural schools. And I think that is a real positive. But going through on page two of the appendix outlining the timetable, so today is quite an important day, because this is the school census date, and this is whereby next year's funding will be worked out for Warwickshire schools based on their number enrolled on this day. As I said, under the delegation paper, we will be sending out that consultation to schools on Monday, the twelfth of October. I'd also like to focus on the twentieth of November, which is the deadline for submitting any disapplication to the SFA to move up to five percent of funding from the schools block to the high needs block. And I wondered whether Dwayne or Ian could give a view at this stage on what the local authorities' view on that is, because I am aware that it will need some consultation and have to take place with schools between now and that deadline for submission.
Yeah, I mean, we will be looking, and one of the things we will be looking at as one of the measures is to apply to the Secretary of State for no point five transfer between blocks. So we will need to bring that to the School Forum so that they can approve us doing that or recommend that we go ahead with that application to the Secretary of State.
Yeah. I think we need to see that as Schools Forum considering send change programming around and that being one of the practical ways in which they could support progress in this field. But I wouldn't want you to think it's just going to be an on-the-spot decision, far from it. It needs to be a very informed decision, lots of engagement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next Schools Forum is the third of December whereby information around next year's funding will be brought to that meeting for decision. It seems a bit strange, because then after that, mid-December, the SFA actually tell us what our funding is going to be, and we have to model it. And we have, I mean, last year it came out about three days before Christmas, and we had two weeks into January to turn that information round, so it is actually quite tight. If there's any significant changes at that stage, we do hold back a meeting in January, the fourteenth of January for next year, in case any further decisions have to be made by Schools Forum because of any changes in funding between those two periods. Experience has shown that that meeting does take place. We have had that January meeting for the last two years, because we do have to bring back things to Schools Forum. For some issues, Schools Forum agree the proposals. For some, it's a recommendation to councillors. So Cabinet are due to meet on the nineteenth of January, when the final decisions will be made on funding for next year. By the end of January, hopefully the SFA will confirm all our funding assumptions and what the funding should be within schools. Full council will then agree the final budgets on the fourth of February, that's when it's due to meet. Then we hope, and we have done this, we hope to get budgets out to schools, including three-year indicative budgets by within the first two weeks of February. And that's something that we have achieved over the last three years. But I'm happy to take any questions on the timetable.
Okay, any questions or comments please for Neil? Don't think there's anything unusual there that hasn't, is different from any previous years.
No, it does follow the same format, Phil.
Yeah. Okay. Right, we'll move on then to item ten. This is just for information.
Yeah, again, it's just for information. What I wanted to do was just so people can understand how the three main funding blocks in schools work, so you can actually just see it side by side, because normally these documents come out separately. So you can actually see, you know, how much funding is available. So you can see that when comparing the schools block to the early years block to the high needs block, where you can see that the schools block is, you know, ten times the allocation for early years. But it's just bringing up some of the sort of key issues around the basis for the calculation, that we are trying to move to the hard formula. What we're doing for three and four-year-olds whereby we're trying to maximise the amount of money that we can get into those providers. And then just picking up some of the current issues around, within the schools block, we do have a two-point-four million pound surplus that's currently being held over the Future Growth Fund. Putting that in some context of that, I mean, if we're looking at a point-five percent disapplication movement between the schools block and the high needs block, I mean, that is only about one-point-seven million. So all things being equal, we have sufficient money within our growth fund to cover off any point-five percent disapplication. Just to give you some background about how the figures work. For the early years, the big issue is around the sustainability of our maintained nursery schools, because they get supplementary funding that is ring-fenced for those schools. And at the moment, they've only been guaranteed that funding to the end of this academic year, is what happens after then, we don't know. As I said earlier, we do have a one-point-eight million early years underspend, which is ring-fenced for early years. But again, happy to take any questions, and I won't pick up anything on the high needs, because Dwayne's got a detailed paper coming next.
And just as a reminder, Neil, that three-hundred-and-forty-nine million in the schools block covers both maintained schools and academies.
Yes, this does, this is before any recruitment.
Yeah.
To cover the cost in academies. I think it just, because we like to talk about Warwickshire schools rather than maintained and academy schools.
Yeah, and there's changes going on there all the time, aren't there? I think that's really useful. I mean, as a new member of the Schools Forum, I think that's a very good context and which to repeat, read the reports that are coming forward. I certainly would have found it very useful when I joined some time ago. So yeah, thanks for that, Neil. Are there any comments or questions for Neil on that, on that document? Okay. Item eleven then, the floor is yours, Dwayne, I think.
Oh, thank you. Hi, everybody. I will start off today with explaining how the high needs funding, our funding is allocated within schools. So please feel free to interrupt or shout out at any time if you want to ask a question.
We'll have no shout-outs, we'll have praise and pleas.
So in terms of school settings, how schools are funded, they're funded in sort of three parts of the school blocks. So the first part is called element one. So whenever you read a document and it's element one, this is what I call the OPU, the OPU money. And that's calculated now through the sort of National Funding Formula. And every child in every mainstream setting will have their allocation of OPU money. So you've just done your census if you're school colleagues, and from that point of the census, we will know who's sitting in your school and the money will be calculated. We have another element which is called element two, and the element two is what we call a notional six thousand. This is within the Children's Families Act and is laid out in the financial regs as well as the code of practice. And this notional six thousand is to be used within schools as what we call the graduated approach. So as the children's needs are sort of, have been sort of exposed, then that funding allocation is there to meet those needs. If a child's needs is above and beyond what a school can actually meet through the OPU and the element one, then we have what we call the element three money. And this element three money is money that is drawn down from the high needs block. So, you know, when we look at the DSG when it comes in, you've got the whole amount of money that's broken up into blocks, the central schools block, you've got the high needs block, the early years block, and each of them blocks are actually rigged. So when we just spoke about the no point five to transfer between any of them blocks, we do actually need permission, and we need that permission from the Secretary of State. In terms of Warwickshire at the moment, there are two sort of bandings that go into our mainstream schools, and that's a band C, and that's on average about three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirteen pound, and it's a band D, and that's about eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifteen pound. Certainly, and for newcomers to the Schools Forum, I only started in February at Warwickshire, and sort of looking at your funding streams, having looked at it prior to joining, because I knew I was coming, actually, you know, our money going into our mainstream school isn't massive by any means. And certainly when I spoke at the Law Schools Forum, and the case for change I actually put to the Schools Forum was, how can we spend, how can we invest in our schools earlier on, at the earliest stage, to ensure the right level of support is coming in and with the right level of funding? Because what I do know is that the band C and D, which are funded at, very often we come back out to schools with exceptional requests. And hence, going within exceptional requests, what we do know is the average band or the average funding level drawn down from the high needs blocks is, it works out about nine-thousand pound. So with the element one, two and three, on average, a child that accesses mainstream school would come with a funding level of fifteen thousand plus the four. Looking at our sort of special schools, our special schools are funded slightly different. They're funded on a place-led mechanism, and that is set in the pound of the school, is set in the size of that school and the numbers of children you want in that school. And hence, if it's a hundred children, you're drawing a hundred lots of ten, ten thousand pound down. Again, with special schools, they're funded in a very similar way, so that's the base led, place-led money. And again, they access the high needs block for that element three. And that element three is funding special educational needs of that young person, which is above and beyond that ten thousand place-led money. In Warwickshire, the picture is slightly different, because what we have, as against our national statistics, is that we have more children in Warwickshire in special schools than our statistical neighbours and our regional neighbours and our national database. I was looking at research in the last couple of weeks and found the top ten performing local authorities and schools, and there were three characteristics that made them top performing, and that was high outcomes and low cost. And how they achieved the outcomes was primarily through inclusion, through early support and through not excluding children. So if we move on in terms of funding of special schools, they are, as I said, funded ten thousand. Now we have resource bases. So I'm pleased, as I said, if you're not sure what I'm on about, you know, please put your hand up. Our resource bases are funded slightly different, in so much as about two years ago, I think it was, when the funding regs changed, they used to be funded like special schools, but with the introduction of the National Funding Formula, what we do now is that the National Funding Formula pays for the element one, and instead of a notional six thousand, we give an actual six thousand, okay? Unless one of the places is empty and we've agreed that size, in which way we pay the base level of ten thousand. All places in the resource bases are currently funded at a band D. So again, it's, you know, approximately nine thousand pound per learner plus the six plus the four. When we look at one of our special schools, in particular, children with social emotional mental health, there's two actually, they're funding quite highly high. They have funded a twenty-three thousand pound from the high needs block for the element three money, coupled with the ten thousand of the place-led money. The issue we've got around independent, and it's something I've been looking at in the last six months since I've been here, is that any child that accesses an independent school, the whole amount of their money is taken from the high needs block. So it's not as if we're getting a funded stream in for the children, because they're not on our school census data to draw down funding. So therefore, you know, when we pay for children to go into the independent sector, everything comes out to the high needs block. And the average cost of a placement in the independent specialist provision is on average fifty-three thousand. Another thing which I've noticed since I've come here is the cost of alternative provision. And it's been something I've been looking, as I'm peeling back the layers for the Warwickshire, and at the moment, we have two types of alternative provision. We have alternative provision which are DFE-registered. They tend to be on our, what we call our alternative provision for the Area Behaviour Partnership Framework. And then we have other alternative provisions which are unregistered provisions. The lower plan to them is quite different and how we name them in plans. But basically, what we are finding is the cost of our unregistered alternative provision are increasing significantly. And for some providers, they're on average now fifty-three thousand pound in terms of costs. One provider actually doubling their costs in one year. Okay, so post sixteen, and this is the big one, because, you know, when we look at the Timsen Review in line with exclusions, and we look at the funding from the high needs block. I was here in this world when we had statements on that funding used to finish at nineteen years of age, and money from the high needs block, that was it, you didn't draw any more money from that, and you were just, LDA section one-three-nine A is done to go to college, and the college doing the funding from the FSA. That's no longer the case with the extension of the reforms up to the age of twenty-five. Even when a learner leaves your school, I mean, in particular if you're a secondary school, the element three money is always drawn from the high needs block. So if you have a child in your school and they're six and they remain in the educational establishment until they're twenty-five, yeah, all their nineteen years, lots of money will be drawn from the high needs block from the element three. So same happens with our early years children, as if they start into the early years sector at two and they have an education, health and care plan, the time they can spend, obviously, within the funding mechanism of the high needs blocks is approximately twenty-three years. So we do know our post-sixteen is increasing, in particular our nineteen-to-twenty-five agenda and the preparation for adulthood. I certainly know from outcomes of tribunals that they're looking at lateral learning, horizontal learning, so it's not so much anymore about change. learning. So it's not so much anymore about achieving a status disease, it is about, you know, lots of skills for life. So it is an area of growth, and it's one I've identified within the Send Change Programme as well. So that's a brief introduction to funding around children with high needs. Is there any questions anybody wants to ask me?
Dwayne, can I just take you back to paragraph 2.4? You say that trialling arrangements to mitigate the barrier of traded services to early intervention. Can you give us an example of that?
Sorry, say it again, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry. Under paragraph 2.4, you talk about trialling arrangements to mitigate the barrier of traded services to early intervention. Can you give us an example of that, what you're thinking is?
Yeah, absolutely. So obviously, we trade part of our services within Warwickshire. I mean, for me, it's about early interventions. But again, the right supporting at the right time. And actually, you know, when I've looked at the funding systems here, and how we cost some fundings and our statutory services, and what we trade, we've almost incentivised schools not to keep children, yeah? So when I look at the EP service, I'm reviewing the EP service, and what I've asked the EP services is look at what are we offering as a core offer, yeah? What are we going to give to all our schools free of charge?
Okay.
And that's important under what I say is the universal offer, yeah? So all schools free of charge should have access to X, Y, and Z to prevent, to get their support in early enough, so that they don't feel the need to let the behaviours or the special needs escalate to a point where they need a plan. Now, at the moment, what's in the core offer, I don't feel is sufficient. So when we look at the traded arm, so what schools buy in, yeah, that's very good offer. So what I want to do is redress the balance and say, right then, how can we deliver a top class service, yeah, for all children in Warwickshire, which is affordable, while still offering a traded arm for some of the more specialist stuff that schools might want to draw from, from the EP service? But that's just one service of many that I obviously have in my portfolio.
Okay, thank you for that. Is it Nikki Burton? You're on mute, Nikki.
Okay, you got me now?
Yeah.
Sorry. Dwayne, thank you so much for the report. I think from Schools Forum perspective, we've asked over the last couple of years for more detail, and this really fulfils that. I'm the next reporter to come. I guess for me, just to confirm it for Schools Forum, so obviously for early years settings, they're mentioned in the early years funding in the next paper rather than this one more so. And just to confirm that, because the SENV payments come from that budget rather than for this SENV funding, is that correct?
Well, some of it does, some of it doesn't. And it's something I'm looking at as I move through the Send Change Programme. For me, what's really important is that children, young people, especially our babies that are born with life-limiting sort of diseases, let me give you one, Barton disease. You know, if a child of two is diagnosed with Barton, the likelihood is they won't grow into adulthood. So for me, it's really important that we get the right support in at the right time with our health, social care and education colleagues. On the other hand, what I want to do is extend my services into schools, into the 0.5. Because what the data tells me, and what evidence tells me, is the outcomes for children are not good in that age range, okay? They're well below national levels. So to do that, I want to be able to surround the children that absolutely, no question about it, require a plan, they get a plan, and they get it as early as possible. So we improve the outcomes. On the other hand, I want to look at the model of delivery to make sure that we are spreading good practice, and we are completely upskinned in the workforce, to ensure that, you know, people said to me, you know, children need to be school ready. Actually, children are quite resilient. It's the adults that need to be ready for the kids. So I want to try and turn that theory on his head and say, you know, we will support you, and how can we do that? So early years, some of it is a pot of money from the high needs block, the element three to fund the plan. But another, in terms of funding for the setting comes from the schools block, the early years block, sorry.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Fay Padfield.
Hi, thank you. So you talk about early identification. How do we link in to neurodevelopmental services? Because that's a significant barrier in schools, the wait times for children who are identified at preschool age of behavioural issues. And families go through years of struggling and being told they're bad parents because they can't get any assessments. I know schools are supposed to support on need, not on diagnosis. That's not always the reality. How are we working with the other services to ensure this holistic support for children?
Absolutely. And I so hear what you say. So first and foremost, it isn't about the diagnosis, it isn't about the labour. For me, you know, if a child is exhibiting a need, it's a need that we meet. In saying that, I fully get families' journeys. You know, I've been in this world for a long time. What I am doing, I have set up in the last couple of months, and, you know, please be with me, I've been here six, seven months, so I am on the beginning of the journey. But I have set up meetings with my colleagues to say, okay, how can we join commission? How can we work together? How can we get that early intervention in place? And who are the right people to have there? So for example, I mean, when I look at one of the services within my portfolio, that has doubled in size in the last year, okay? And for me, the question I have is where does that ownership set? Yeah, so it's clear, you know, at the moment, it's being used almost as a step down provision from our tier four beds. So what I'm trying to do is work with my partners to get them on board, in terms of us working together, looking at the need, how we can have holistic meetings. If a child comes into my medical, he's keeping that oversight. But also working with the commissioners to start commissioning and, you know, setting targets against their service. I don't claim to say it's going to be easy, you know? And I can't solve this problem on my own, Fay. But, you know, I am starting the conversations, and I am making sure that, you know, if they are diagnosing the child, or if they're not, but they're seeing the child, they do keep that medical oversight of that child's needs. Yeah? But I have started the conversations, please be reassured of that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is Argon.
Rose, Rose gone.
Rose gone, okay, thank you.
Do you want to put your mic on?
Thank you, sorry. What was just said, that's a real concern for me. There's a disparage between health and education, which then impacts on both sides. And typically, we're often seeing as head teachers in schools that various sort of health teams will say, schools need to deal with it. And schools will say, but we need answers. And the unfortunate, long waiting time just aggravates for families and for staff, because you try to deploy various strategies, but you haven't necessarily got answers. It's a catch 22. I think from my point of view, it's having, I think I've noticed over time that there is, what we think is a shared language, isn't a shared language between education and health. The way in which we talk about disability in education is very different than the way health might talk about it. But I think I would really welcome some joined up thinking in regards to health understanding sort of the limitations and complexities of education, and similarly, education understanding the complexities and limitations of health, so that we can get it right for our children. I'm really very passionate about that, so, yeah.
And thank you. And no different to, I think, anybody in this room, actually, you know, if we get the right support in at the right time, you know, we get good or better outcomes. But I think for me, it is about, I can't, I can work with the colleagues I need to change and bringing them along, but I can change the teams that I manage. So one of the things I've set a task to the EP service, which sits under obviously my leadership, is go away. Do we want our schools to, you know, what can we offer our schools as a baseline offer free of charge? So do we want all our resource bases that we have set up to be all trauma-informed resource bases? And if we do, yeah, how are we going to deliver it? How are we going to cost that, yeah? And once we set up one, we can spread that, because ultimately, colleagues can work alongside colleagues. In terms of teaching schools, how do I get into the teaching schools to make sure, you know, I'm delivering what they continue need? Yeah, so everything I'm looking at, you know, is about us engaging, us working together. So, you know, I have set quite high expectations for my own service areas, to start rethinking how we can deliver to schools, and more importantly, free of charge. So actually, we are giving you them tools to be able to do your job. I can see somebody says, Anne.
Great, thank you, Larry.
Sorry, can I just finish? Sorry. I think the biggest bug there is, and I've experienced this not just as a head teacher, but I've experienced a parent, is that very often these services will say to parents, when parents are feeling at the last straw, they'll say to them, oh, you need an EHCP. And then parents come into schools saying, we need an EHCP. And so it's just, that's the big thing, is other professionals outside of education saying there's a need. And of course, then we're fighting parents who have been told they need an EHCP, and not necessarily because schools can do other things instead.
Can I just say to that, I mean, I had a meeting with health, and I've said, you know, I have started that dialogue. So I had three health colleagues last week, named school that the child should go to, and to say the child should go to a special school. So what I've done, because it is an education, health and care plan, what I've said to my health colleagues, if, you know, I don't comment, I'm, you know, I'm a maths teacher by training, I don't comment about health needs, I leave that to the doctor. If they're going to do that by education, what I've said, I'll just put it in the health section of the HC plan, and you'll have to pay for it. So, you know, at the end of there, please be assured, I'm really having some really difficult conversations and challenging and my colleagues professionally, so that actually we can find, you know, a ground where we can all work together and build good foundations. I absolutely agree with you. It's something we've got to work on, and it's not going to change overnight.
You've repeated exactly what I've said. I wouldn't go and diagnose somebody with something, but yes, so thank you. Thank you, Dwayne. Thank you ever so much for that.
Okay, Rose, thank you for that. Larry?
Yeah, thank you. I rejoined the forum after a couple of year gap, and this is a bit of a déjà vu for me. I'm very enthused by your messages this afternoon. But I remember frequently having these conversations with your predecessors and forum. And I guess Phil will remember this, and the other members that have been there for some time. And we had some pretty in-depth discussions about how we can improve the methods of working with the health service, or wherever else it is outside those remaps. It sounds to me as if we haven't, this is no dig at yourself, that we've really made much progress in that field. And I support all the comments that were made before. There's a lot of frustration in schools in these areas. I would like to hear or see what support you are going to get on this occasion, to make sure that we get some benefit from your efforts. Because it sounds to me as we haven't had those benefits, having had a number of previous discussions before at this level. I'd hate for you to put all this hard work in, and we don't see any benefit from it. So I'd like to ask Ian and Neil what their view is on what we're going to do differently this time to make sure your efforts are successful.
Ian?
Hi, I'm conscious that Andy only joined us in recent months, and I only joined Warwickshire last year. We all come with our experience from previous authorities of the need for send change programmes, the need for change in practice in schools and support services as part of that, and how actually, for those programmes to be successful, they need lots of engagement and ownership. So in mobilising the Send Change Programme, we've put a lot of time in with councillors. So cabinet members, overview and scrutiny, and backbenchers are aware of where our shortcomings are, and what we need to change in our 31 projects. So council ownership is one part of it. Corporate board own the change programme, and all of the teams that they represent. So we have a lot of briefing, engagement and involvement with support services, Andy's finance team being a big part of the modelling and the change process that's ahead for us. Our project management capacity within the council, and our marcoms, our communications capacity within the council is mobilised as part of getting the change programme operational. A lot of engagement with our own internal education, sending inclusion teams as well, to understand why we need to change and how we need to change. And that's before we even get to the wider world. And you'll know, and this happens part of it, we need to make sure that governors, head teachers, SENCOs, practitioners are aware of why we need to change and how they can be part of the change to make a difference for children and families. And then there's a lot of work needs to be done to make sure that parents and carers are aware of what's coming ahead, and how they can positively engage with it, and how it can possibly make a difference for them. Because for some families, we know that any change is a major challenge in its own right. And we need to be with them every step of the way in our communications. So I was deliberately not a short answer, because every step of this change journey, we need to make sure there is ownership of the next step, and an understanding of why it needs to happen, and the chance for people to input on how they can be part of it and make a difference. Otherwise, if we don't all do that collaboratively, it could be the best constructed Send Change Programme ever, but it won't land. It doesn't land unless it is owned by all of the stakeholders. So it needs the confidence of school community as part of that.
Yeah, I'm not being critical of the efforts. As I said earlier, I'm quite enthused by what I've heard from a fellow Welsh person.
I was going to say.
All I'm trying to get at is that, and Phil and the others will know this very clearly, change is difficult, but we've got these chimneys of different areas with different priorities. And we've had this conversation, again, I refer back to the people who've been on before, and it sounds as if nothing has moved forward. I just want, I'd just like to understand what's going to be different this time. And maybe don't answer this time, but I'd like to see a regular update from Dwayne, and hear her views on what support she's getting to knock down those chimneys, and get an organisation structure in place that the right priority has been met at the right time thus. And I'm not underestimating the task that is, but we are three or four years down the road, and we haven't moved forward. And those are the things that need to be urgently put in place with the NHS or whoever it is. And somebody has to take that responsibility. And if that's or the county council, then we need them to back Dwayne and yourselves with these programmes.
I think you've touched on something, Larry. Sorry, Ian. I think you've touched on something there, Larry. I think we've got a number of new people coming to the county, and they're obviously working very hard on certain things. Where we have issues is where it comes up against the monolith of health outside the council. And that's an area where we can only exert influence, we can't necessarily change anything. Do you want to comment on that, Ian?
Well, actually, I think we have a duty to continue to work really closely with health at all levels. We have lots of collaboration operationally. But where there are changes in the system that can make a real difference, it needs the ownership of that board. We'll be working with them at that level as well. It won't be easy. I've had those kind of battles elsewhere as well. But actually, But actually, there was a very specific request just which I think we can give an absolute assurance on. We will give you an update every cycle on where we are with the programme, what's going well with it and what is more challenging and needs some focus and attention to actually get it on track. So, yeah, we'll be really open on that with you. Because, you know, if we're asking you to take a step of faith in the change journey and the same for other parts of the education community, we need to be open with you around what we expect of you, what we expect of ourselves. And where something hasn't worked right, how we can put it back on track. So, yeah, we'll do a regular update for you.
Okay, thank you. I've got four more speakers then. Anne Bound, sorry, I don't know your first name.
Matthew. Matthew. It's, it's Matthew Bound. And I was just going to really just, just, just put in with the information there that some people already know, because I've said a few times, but really just to back Dwayne and answer the question of what's going to be different this time. I am a member of the forum, the funding forum, but I'm also a member of the SND and Inclusion Board. And I'm not sure when the last time you were with Funding Forum was. However, I've been a member of the board for two years now. And this is something that certainly relatively new in the way that it's being constructed with its members. And this is a board that meets regularly, just like Funding Forum. And what we do is with, with Dwayne and with Ian and with Ross Coles and others is we have a group of, there's heads on the board, there's NHS on the board, there's secondary heads of special schools. And we try and unpick what these issues are. And together we try and work with possible solutions to bring together to places like Funding Forum and other places as well. So I'd just like to say, I don't know when the last time you were on the Funding Forum is, but for me personally, as a head teacher that's got a passion for SND, I do feel that it's not just on the shoulders of Dwayne or on the shoulders of Ian. But I think there's an awful lot of professionals now sitting around that table trying to unpick and find a solution.
Thank you for that. Andrew Felt, please.
And yeah, I suppose just building on Ian's point of view really. I'm conscious of we've been brutally honest about this. There's been some issues from a Warwickshire County Council point of view as an officer of Warwickshire County Council over the last few years in terms of continuity of leadership and how things have been moved forward. So I can understand some frustrations about whether we have got to act together. I think what's different now is that there is a real sense of priority around this within the county council, all the way up to strategic board and within the cabinet, as Ian was articulating. And I know Monica sees this as alongside Covid, one of our top two priorities to deal with moving forward generally the education side of things and how we, not just with the SND but other aspects as well. And get a stronger grip, wrap the right corporate resources around Ian and Dwayne and the team they've got. And pumping in some extra resources. And we've already committed an extra million pound from the investment funds to sort of start to move this forward. There's more work got to be done around the business cases to see if there's more investment needed to sort of get scripts with this. But Ian's also right that actually developing those solutions, it's intrinsic that we're working in partnership with you in the right way. And we start to leverage some of the positive relationship we've got with people like health. Because if I look at the adult side of the world, actually, we've had a really good response to Covid with the NHS to this period. And actually, we've got national recognition for some of the funding arrangements we've had in place in terms of drawing funding down from hell to support the Covid issues. So actually, we've got to work out how we tap into those relationships, both on the children's and the adult side of things, to get the most of moving some of these issues forward basically. And I don't think we've had the leadership there historically to move that forward. I think the fact we've got some new people in and there's more momentum and there's more commitment there, both from yourselves and from ourselves. And I think it's just a much better chance of succeeding. And the county council's got some significant financial liabilities that we're trying to offset as a consequence if we don't get this right. So it's, it's very much in our interest to put the right effort into dealing with this from a number of reasons. Both outcomes for these children that currently aren't getting the outcomes in need, as well as the financial situation from a county council point of view.
Thank you very much. Sybil.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I like Phil and Larry have been many, many years on the Warwickshire School Forum. And I must say, last year, when we were having quite difficult discussions about the 0.5% transfer from school block to high needs, I was one that was quite vehemently against it. Because like Larry and Phil, I have had seen this discussion year on year that I am so encouraged by what is going on. And, you know, I take my hat off to you. I think you're doing a wonderful job. I just hope that he will all come. But really, it's the first time I think it's been grasped and proceeding. Well done.
Oh, thank you.
A good high note to end this discussion on. I think we've, we have had a good discussion. I don't see any more hands raised. So with your permission, thanks for that, Dwayne, we'll move on to item 12, which is early years, Neil.
Thank you, Phil. Again, this is an item for information. It's just, just to bring all Schools Forum members, not just the new members up to speed on how early years funding block works. So just giving you some, some background. So, I mean, there are four different providers. And as you can see in section 1.1, the biggest provider of early years provision is with the private voluntary independent sector, whereby they're nearly four fifths of, of the provision in this area. Second, with infant and primary schools, nursery classes, and then maintain nursery schools and child minders. But it's also trying to get some background about how the, how the funding is allocated. Because there are, there are five very distinct areas. So the first one is, is two-year-old provision. And this is only for children of eligible working parents. And if you go back to item 10, when I give the comparison of the DSG blocks, this year, the funding for early years is 33.1 million, so just over 33 million. The two-year-old provision represents three million pound of that funding, so less than a tenth. The second bit is the three and four-year-olds, and this is the vast majority of the funding. And that equates for 29 million of the 33 million. So a huge chunk of money of the early years provision goes into three and four-year-olds. And that's where I said earlier on about how important it is to try and maximise that amount of money that is getting in, into providers. So it, there's a number of factors. The main issue for, for us with this is that from the three and four-year-old funding, the local authority can top slice 5% of this funding. It's the only bit of early years funding that we can top slice. And we do do this, but the money does go back into early years providers by supporting, by supporting those, that provision. The view is, is that within the remaining 95% that is passported to schools, 10% has to be, a maximum 10% can be done through supplements. There are a number of supplements, but the only mandatory one is deprivation. And for those that have been on Schools Forum for some times, they will know that there's been lots of talk within the early years working group. There's lots of papers that have come to Schools Forum about what is the best split for funding in three and four-year-olds. And it has been agreed that deprivation will be the only factor that will be used. And we're unlikely to support any, any review of that. And then we just have two less, lesser funding streams. Early years pupil premium, I mean, that just comes to 160,000 a year. And the disability access fund, 119,000. So that actually supports less than 200 children in early years, that 119,000. So only 200 pupils that are eligible for that funding. And then the last funding, as I mentioned before, is the maintained nursery school supplementary funding, which recognises that those schools are maintained schools, but they're not included in the national funding formula. So they're, they're, they are recognised that they do have additional costs above some other providers. And section seven, I think, is quite important because this is the only block whereby it's adjusted in year. For the schools block, we allocate the money on the first of April for maintained schools and the first of September for academy schools. That funding does not change. Once we announce what the funding is for the schools, that is it. For the early years, there are adjustments. So we could actually have a clawback of money if we have less pupils. But the contrary to that is we will get more money if there were more pupils within, within the system during the January census points. The issue is, is if you have a lot more children than the average in the autumn term, that gives us some funding issues because we won't have the funding for them until the January, whereby it may, may be more, more stable. But that's, that's just an issue that we're, we're trying to work through at the moment. And one of the reasons why we're keeping the early years ring fence reserve at this stage. But Phil, I'm happy to take any questions from, from members.
And Neil, has there been any significant impact on the, the PVI providers of what's happened this year? And obviously, various shutdowns from March through to, to summer term. Has that had an impact on them?
I think, I, I'd like to see if Sarah or Mary Ann has any views on that, if they're still with us. Because there, there are two PVI representatives on, on, on Schools Forum. And Mary Ann's put her hand up, Phil.
Okay, Mary Ann, would you like to comment on that, please?
Yeah, I, I believe that there's, there's been some quite significant impact. There's, there's lots of different types of PVI nurseries and early year settings. And the impact will have been differing on all of them. There's a significant financial impact whilst we still maintain our funding, which is fabulous. For a lot of PVI settings, the majority of their income is via fees. And they've seen a significant drop in fees over the closure periods, which some will make them unattainable going forward. And for others, we'll see them having drastic cuts in their, in their income this year. So there, there's also been huge impact on staffing. As we go into the winter, we're, we're seeing bubbles potentially having to close and then reopen. And the, the feeling in the PVI sector is, is quite worried at the moment, I would say. The, the impact of having to close bubbles for us, whilst if it's in preschool, we might obtain some funding. Most of the nurseries in the industry that we're aware of charge top-up fees in order to make our daily rates. And we would have to forego those. And then for our fee-paying children, we'd have no income whatsoever while still having to maintain and pay our staff. So the, the impact of Covid has been huge.
Okay, thank you for that. Nikki, I've got next. Nikki Burton.
Hello again. And Neil, just to clarify for the new members, on 2.2, the, about the two-year-old grant is a possibility. There is a criteria for that, so there is a clear criteria for that grant. I think that's just really fair to say on there. And also just from, just thinking in the future, just thinking about the send to change programme. Obviously, our three to four-year-olds, there is a top slice. And some of that top slice, it goes towards the funds and for the disability access fund. Do you see that ever happening with the two-year-olds? Is that somewhere that would go or is that something that can't happen? Or just think about Dwayne's comments about how we're going to be going into obviously a very early years foundation of getting it right for the children. How do we manage that budget for that, I guess?
I, I, I'll be honest with you, Nikki, I don't know. I haven't looked at it in that much detail. As I said earlier on, I mean, we're still waiting for the early years funding for next year. It's the one that's been, not been delayed, but it was one that wasn't announced at the same time as the other three blocks were. But at this stage, I, I don't think there'd be any top slicing of the two-year-old provision. And I think, I think that would be right. I mean, in funding terms, it is a small percentage, it's less than 10%. And I think the, the authority would, would have to accept that doing the 0.5% of the three and four-year-old funding should be sufficient to, to, to meet the, the services they, they need to provide centrally to support all early years providers.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions or comments for Neil on this, please? Okay, item 13 is SND and inclusion. Back to you, Dwayne, now you've had a chance to catch your breath.
Yeah, I'll have a drink for you. Okay, so I just wanted to sort of clear a few things up first. Because when I started off the last one and I was asked, will we be in a positive position? I mean, firstly, I think we are because the overspend at the moment is in 60 million. I'm trying to tackle with, I'm tackling 7 million with projected in, in your overspend next year, about 11 million. Are we behind the curve? Yes, we are behind the curve. I've got to be honest with you, there's some things I'm doing in Warwickshire now I was doing five years ago. Do I, am I used to a different way of working? Yes, I've been used to a different way of working if you're in Wales. We certainly don't have the level of special schools you have. We certainly don't have education, health and care plans. And we certainly don't go down the statement route for children that go to mainstream schools. Can I narrow the gap? And can I close the gap? Well, I certainly can't close the gap, a gap, you know, I think, you know, when you look at the whole picture and you put 11 years more children into a system, yeah? And you're not funding at that level, then, you know, what money you've got, you know, is not going to go around. But doesn't mean we shouldn't do anything, and I think not. So if we look at the sending and change and inclusion, I've started from my core belief that every child has a right to a high-quality education regardless of their needs. And, you know, whatever feasible and practical, that needs to be met within our local communities. And what, what I say is, is a child have a right to go to the local school and we have a duty to support that school to meet their needs. So, you know, it is significant for Warwickshire, I'm not going to hide that fact. I think within the first month, two months of being here, I raised that I had concerns and that we had to change the practices we were doing, we had to be more inclusive. But on that route, we had to support our schools and our early year settings to make sure that happened. I'm also conscious that, you know, I'm not a miracle worker and I'm not the only person that can sort this issue. It must be a joint approach across the whole of the local area. So we started looking and I know obviously if I look at the national audit report, there were four authorities that would intervene and I was the one that was intervened and put the report together for the national audit. And one of the questions they said to me, and this was two years ago now, Dwayne, when do you know you're in a crisis? When will you know? And I said, there and then, we're in one now. And it's quite a difficult job because you're trying to fix things and you know actually some of the things are not fixed, fixable. So what, what I did in the first few weeks of coming here, because of the 1% over the DSG, we started pulling the DSG recovery plan together. It's all right to cover it in your overspend, actually, we need to make the system sustainable. So we had the DSG sustainability plan. I'm also conscious you had a send strategy last year that was consulted on, as well as empower that had come in and done a review. So ultimately, I started on the journey of working with the senior leadership team in the senior, saying, okay, guys, let's just all pull these all together and let's have a look what, what we are doing in Warwickshire. I think important is that I reflect within my own service areas. And one of the fundamental questions I asked is, what are we charging for? Is the service we run invaluable money? But more importantly, are the outcomes good or better for our learners? And actually, as I started looking at your data, for all the money we are spending at the moment, for all the services we're providing, outcomes in the early years sector are not good. They'd be below floor level. And even the outcomes of key stage four, which are better than any of the other outcomes, are on a downward trajectory. So for me, it is about setting our expectation, it's about setting the road and the vision. So we've, we've, we originally sort of got together and we identified, I think, and if Ross is here, you can, you can tell this. But 126 areas where we felt, okay, we could make improvements there, we could upskill workforce there. And we brought them down to 31 projects. So the sending and change and inclusion, as it stands at the moment, has 31 projects in there. And the project range from service reviews of my own service area, I'm looking all the time about, you know, how my services run, if they're producing good or better outcomes, whether they're valuable for money and whether they're affordable. Because what we cannot have in any sort of society or community is a post code lottery. So I want to make sure that any decisions, how we spend our money is fair, transparent and equitable across the whole of Warwickshire. Again, I've said about how we get, you know, the provision to the right place at the right time. So the early years sector is a passion of mine. We know if we get it right from the start, the outcomes are positive. When I've looked at children and that accessing alternative providers, the outcomes are not good. We need to improve them, we need to set the standard, fair.
Sorry, it just took me a minute to take my, my
Sorry, it just took me a minute to take my microphone on. How do we ensure that those outcomes aren't deteriorating in the meantime? As we're making those changes, I'm sure you're probably aware that through the parental route, I'm sure heads are aware, that there are a number of families that have faced changes to their EHCPs. They're feeling under pressure, feeling it's about money and not about their child. How are we ensuring that as we move towards this, we're scaffolding those families?
Absolutely. I think first of all, Fay, is about really how we define good. And what I've said, I'm not here to sort of take away anything. What I'm here to do is make sure that the money goes to the right places at the right time. And there needs to be some changes within the system. If we are spending half a million pound on one child a year for education, that half a million pound, if we got in, it could have been a far different outcome. In terms of what I have said to colleagues, that we need to invest to save. So we need to invest now. And what it should show is actually, we will be spending more initially. But as we upskill, as we're building confidence with our families, as, you know, as schools are more able to meet the needs, as we surround that support, what we should see is not crisis, because at the moment in Warwickshire, is families get to a crisis point before we actually put support in. And for me, it's not about that. But it's how we enable our families as well. It's how, you know, when you've got a child that's diagnosed with Down Syndrome, that's not going to change. You know, that isn't going to change. We need to upskill our families, enable our families to feel more powerful and feel empowered as well. So it's not going to be easy, but certainly it would be on modelling how much we spend in, how we're investing in our schools in terms of financial. Because what happens at the moment, Fay, is that the finance going in, I don't feel is enough initially. But then you get to a crisis point where our child placement is breaking down, to come back and ask us for more money. And then we give, but I don't think we should get to that situation in the first place. So, you know, to me, what I will be saying to corporate board and to cabinet, yes, it's going to go up initially, but it should flatten and eventually tailor off. So if I go back to the report, I'm happy to answer more questions as we go through. So in terms of the projects, they cover, you know, whole system change or behavioural change. I met with colleagues the other week, and they said, our child would never ever cope with a mainstream school. And I just thought, having had five children myself, children cope well. I certainly didn't cope when my children went to school. I spent the evening crying. My kids come out, having had a great day. So I think, again, it's about the aspirations, the expectations of professionals in where a child's needs can be met. You know, the picture and the trajectory isn't positive when you look at the finances. So when people say, we've heard this before, we've been down this road before, I just don't think we've got a choice now. I mean, you know, we are behind the curve. I am totally dedicated to what I do. And my whole life has been spent working with children with special needs. And being a Welsh girl, I'm not going to give up, you know, until I retire. But there isn't a choice here. I mean, we are spending more than what we've got coming in. And we need to make sure that every penny we spend is producing, you know, a positive impact. I can see a hand up. I don't know if you want me to answer a question now?
Yeah, please do if you want to, yeah.
Yeah. Who is it?
Tony Dix.
Tony Dix, okay, Tony. Okay, do you want to ask a question, Tony?
He's put his hand down.
All right, okay. All right, carry on then.
Okay, sorry. So our projects, we've got, we have pulled projects together. Some of them are systems, some are behavioural, some of them are reviewing services. And we've got full business case approved, and full project planning resources. And, you know, I can tell the council are serious about this, you know, because they have completely and utterly surrounded me with with support. And there are further letting projects in draft. And we've got recruitment of three additional project managers. We have set out a communication strategy. We're looking at a financial modelling approach. So how are we measuring where we're going, where we're going on our finances? Fay, you asked me earlier, how would I know? I've set in place performance dashboards. So at the senior leadership team, we're constantly questioning and challenging. And again, at school improvement boards and education partnership boards. We've also set up the program board, which is attended by Andrew Felton, Ian Bird, myself, Mark Ryder, Rob Powell, and Nigel Mims, along with John Coleman. So we've also established a new school, and that's moving on well in terms of the PES project. I've been involved with Ross and colleagues around pointing another sort of trust around one of our schools. We're looking at resource bases. We have written in the last six months a strategy around our primary resource based provision. And I'm working with colleagues, Steve Pendleton at the moment, to do our secondary strategy about the pathways to ensure all children and people have a clear pathway. In terms of our, you know, I've been really keen not to set up rest resource bases, in terms of just setting them up and letting the schools get on with it. One thing for me is, is that making sure that when we set up the resource bases, we provide the reviewing cycle to make sure that the staff that are operating are well skilled, they are well up to date with new legislation and practices for children, and that we offer common theme across the whole of Warwickshire. So Steve Pendleton has been working with school leaders to develop that quality assurance framework, and has started the reviews in the last few weeks for me. So the funding, as I said, you know, I think I can make a difference. Or I should rephrase that. I know I can make a difference. What I can't do is work miracles. And to be honest with you, when we look at the funding coming in, when we look at the demand on the services, and when we look at the growth, I mean, it's the perfect storm. So what I have said to, you know, the leaders of the councils and elected members is, yes, I can narrow the gap. I don't think I can close the gap.
Okay, Tony Dixon, do you want to ask your question, please? Tony is still on here.
He is, but his microphone's on mute.
Yeah, okay. So I'm concerned about, I'm not seeing any information here regarding social services and things like the adoption ACE and adoption services in general, where there are children that have got, that were getting specialist help, but they have to get funding through the adoption services as opposed to schools. Is there a link? Have you got a link there? I know you mentioned the head of service, John Coleman. So just curious how you align to each other?
Okay, thank you, Tony. I actually manage, so the children with disability team sits within my line management. So if we look at the children with disability team, the vast majority of those children will have education, health and care plans. So Eve mostly that leads our team for me. You know, we are working together at the moment on writing service plans. So all my strategic leads and all my leads within my area are writing service plans. Looking at the children within their Tony, there is certainly a reviewing cycle. Over the last couple of months, we have spent, and Eve, I should say, has spent, you know, enormous amount of time getting the sort of assessments, a single assessment rate down, so that we can get that support in place early enough. Again, it is an education, health and care plan. And certainly, you know, it's something I discussed with Nigel Mims. I'm not working in isolation. I meet John Coleman quite regularly. Part of that senior leadership team, and, you know, the strategy around the children disability team, we are working on together. So, you know, we are around the table.
So does that include children who have things like attachment disorder?
Absolutely. So if we look at attachment disorder, and so if we look at attachment disorder, what I've asked my EP service to do is say, okay, trauma attachment, do we roll out a model within all schools, especially in our primary schools, about how we can deliver training around that? Certainly through COVID, what we've been able to do is set up webinars. And we had nine hundred parent carers and professionals attend our last webinars. It's certainly something I'm looking forward to implementing and champion, if I'm honest. But I certainly don't work in isolation. I work with Early Health Family Information Service to ensure that we have that joined up thread.
And you work with ACE as well?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I mean, you know, be with me, Tony, I have only been here seven months, and I've got a busy, but, you know, certainly, you know, for me, and I'm quite clear to all colleagues, this is about the team around the child and family. Yeah, we don't work in isolation. We all work with the same children, and they are our children in Warwickshire. So, you know, I will be working with ACE. In fact, they sit in the same part of the building as my rest of my other teams do. And we are certainly all working together.
I don't think that translates into the school setting, though. It might at your level, but in the school setting, we're not seeing that that joined up working happening.
And, okay, and that, again, you know, Tony, is not going to happen overnight. It's certainly something you've raised today, and I will take forward, and I will see what we need to do. What I like to do is plan, prepare, and I just think, then deliver. So I will take that back from today. I'm happy to have a conversation outside of here with you, if that's okay.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be in touch after this, if I can get your details off Neil Becker. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine.
Thank you.
Ryan, fair to have field, pleased.
Hi. Similar sort of question, really, to Andy, in how we are ensuring that these training that we are putting into schools at all levels, so, you know, attachment for all schools. Recently, it was a Warwickshire priority for autism awareness for all schools, and all teachers would have had this. And still practitioners don't understand. So how are we actually holding to account this money we're spending, and it's not having the desired impact?
Again, Fay, I mean, what I am looking at, and at the moment, again, this is a traded part. So again, what I want to do, I mean, I can't promise everything until I've done all the cost analysis and the impact. And it is only one budget. And at the moment, we are spending more than is coming in. But certainly, what I've been used to, and what I've delivered, is the whole school send approach. And that is that, let's audit, let's audit what schools need and want, as opposed to us saying, this is what we're offering you. Because actually, I mean, I come back from the dyslexia days, when, you know, good quality teaching for children with dyslexia benefited all children. And therefore, some of the stuff we do in a school setting will benefit all children. So I can't promise today, but certainly what I would be looking to do is say, okay, if we did a whole school send audit, we will do that free of charge. But we would want that commitment from you. And for me, when I see good practice, I want to spread that good practice. And I will bring colleagues to it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, hey, thank you. Any more questions or comments, Dwayne, on this report, please? Ryan, thanks very much for taking those questions. We've worked quite hard this afternoon. I think the only item left now, though, is the forward plan, okay, which is listed at item fifteen. Anything you want to say about this, Neil?
No, no, no. The only thing I'd just say is that the DSG recovery plan monitoring is now included on the forward plan. And that's following advice from the SFA on how Schools Forum are kept up to date on how the plan is being delivered. But nothing else to say, Phil, on that.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think that concludes our business for today.
Yeah, I just remind people the next meeting.
Sorry?
Can I remind people the next meeting date of Thursday, the third of December at two PM?
Yeah, yeah. And that will be online on Teams.
Yes, it will be.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your attendance today, your contributions to the meeting. I look forward at some time, hopefully in 2021, to be able to meet everybody in person again. But in the meantime, I think this is my reason to be well, online. And I won't wish you a safe journey home, because you're already there. So thank you very much, and we'll see you all next time.
And thanks for chairing it, Phil. It is very much appreciated.
No worries.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks very much. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good.